Jerem.
Here.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Here. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, today we pray for understanding. There are a lot of things going in the world that it's hard to understand what's going on, but we ask that you increase our understanding. Locally, Lord, we're starting to go into a new budget cycle. Prepare us, Lord, for the known and the seen and the unseen, and help us get in touch with new mindsets that we need to have to approach the problems that affect our city. Last but not least, help our children as we go into a warmer season. Help them to understand that there are better alternatives than violence. In the name of peace we pray. Amen.
Amen.
City Clerk's certified publication of daily record on February 25th, noted for a pre-council, and regular city council meeting March 1st, 2011. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the Leslie Chambers.
We ask that if you have a cellphone or a pager to turn it off or to buy free. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Item number five, Resolutions to Replat Transmitter here with entitled Bay Meadows Replat 9, located southwest of 90th and Q Street, is hereby approved, and Resolution Number 1476 of 2011 is hereby rescinded.
Public hearing on item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Liquor, we'll take item six and seven together. They're both same applicant, same location for different classes. Item six is Class C liquor license for Levi Premium Food Service Limited Partnership, Loft 610 Urban Restaurant Lounge, 2220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3107. New application, new location. That's Class C. And seven is a catering, same applicant for the same location.
Public hearing on items number six and seven begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, honorable members of the city council. My name is Brian Mick. Mick and Associates, 11422 Miracle Hills Drive. Represent Levy Premium Food Service Limited Partnership. That is an affiliate of Levy Restaurants, Inc. of Chicago. Levy runs the concessions and catering at the Quest Center and also TD Ameritrade Park. Levy is taking over the lease and management of the Loft 610, which is at Midtown Crossing. I have Scott Gusterson, who's the designated manager, and then also Christopher Thomas, who's the regional director of operations, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number eight is North Star Bar, Class C liquor license at 8509 North 30th Street. New application, new location.
Public hearing on item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Troy Allgood with North Star Bar, manager and leasie, if you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
This is my mother.
Hi.
And she will also be a part of the daily operations and bartending and stuff.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Yeah.
Folks should have a seat up in front here.
Which one of these is live here?
Both have both of them.
My name is Doug Rose. I live at 12107 North 40th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a business owner in Florence. And I guess the reason I'm here is to propose some questions to y'all. After looking over the application and all the things about the business mix in Florence, I have some questions I guess I need answered. First about parking, and this is not in any necessary order of importance, but parking, anybody that knows Florence knows that parking is just nuts. There's hardly any parking in the place, especially in front of businesses. This particular business is between a current restaurant and some kind of delivery places next door, and it leaves about one and a half car places just in front of there. And anybody knows if you have an establishment that's going to be selling alcohol, liquor, anything, it's going to be far more necessary. I don't know if there's any other parking available. There's some off-street parking on the south side of that set of buildings, but I don't know what the arrangements are there. Currently, we have Threes, Dees, and Jimmy Sees. Didn't mean for that to rhyme or anything like that, but Threes is an alcohol-only place. Dees is similar. Jimmy Sees serves food and alcohol, and they all three have Class Cs. Ted's Liquor Store, Hy-Vee sells off-sale. Florence Food Market's a little bit further away, but they sell off-sale only, and next to it is a restaurant that sells alcohol there, and some other places that are close by. This particular structure's had a history of issues, has absolutely nothing to say about the new ownership, other than it problems have gravitated, and you can look at the police reports, and they've had fights and other things, they've served alcohol to minors. And I'm not sure if the person that was previous owner, who is the current, still owns the structure, but is going to lease it out to the new bar owner. On the application for the liquor license, it says that within the last two years that it had not been licensed. That's not correct. That's the inaccurate accuracy on the application that was made. It's been about a year since the North Star has not been in operation, so somebody will need to clear that up if that's going to continue. Is there going to be any security? If any place that I know of in Florence that might need a security person there, this would be the place. Dees across the street, if you look through, and I've gone through all the records, Dees is spotless. They have no problems whatsoever with this place. I think if you look up the record, the structure's had a number of police calls in the past couple of years for that. Can be subleased. I don't know actually what that means, other than who is going to be allowed to come back into the partnership. That would be a question that I'd like to know. The last thing is that there's 19,000 cars leased pass by this place a day, and I've seen some weird things happen. People that drink beer out of bottles outside during the summertime, public urination, excuse me, if that offends anybody. We used to have a business across the street. Guy came up, watched him walk right straight across the street, urinated on the side of the building, and my wife went out and called him on. She says, "Man's got to go, and man's got to go." And that was problematic for us, so we ended up moving down the street to a bigger space, which we needed, but it was out of the way because it was just too problematic for us. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. We've been in the neighborhood, oh, probably for four years now. We have a fabric store, antique store, and that kind of thing. If anybody has questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is my district, and in fact, we had a town hall just last night in Florence on a number of different issues, but this one did come up too. In a discussion with probably the 40 or 50 people there that are in business or live right in that immediate area, there was the same concern Mr. Rose just expressed about previous history, previous incidents, and is this really what we want to have going forward at this location, particularly when we were discussing last night, these very two blocks in the streetscape project to benefit merchants and business owners in that district being constructed here in just the next year. So I just had a couple of questions, I think for Lieutenant McGee. License for this bar was revoked in 2009 for serving to a minor, and there were, I think, about 18 police reports and six tavern reports in the last couple of years at this location. So it has been a problem location for both residents and police, but I'd like to have your perspective on it from the police department.
Lieutenant Michael McGee, Omaha Police. Yeah, going back over the numbers, going back to 2004, there was one tavern report. 2005, there was two tavern reports. 2007, there were three tavern reports. 2009, there were two tavern reports. Just to give you a generic description of what a tavern report is, is when there is a liquor, drug, or some type of law violation related to or connected to the bar in some way. It could be selling liquor to a minor. It could be an assault. It could be a drug violation. Several different things that generate these type of reports. They then are maintained by the Omaha Police Department and forwarded on to the State Liquor Commission. Going from the timeframe of March 10th, 2007, to September 30th, 2009, there are actually 31 calls to that address with 18 different victims. Keep in mind that many of these calls, if they were an assault call, there may be multiple victims assaulted by one person, generating the multiple victims. So for a variety of reasons, there were 31 calls in basically about a two and a half year timeframe, 2007, 2009.
And it sounds like, I mean, multiple incidents involving police, but as far as the liquor license is concerned, the most serious one being serving to a minor, which led to the revocation in 2009.
Right. In breaking down the tavern reports, there were three incidences in that 2004-2009 timeframe where they were cited for selling liquor to a minor, and there was one possession of marijuana. Also, there were several assaults in that timeframe as well.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing that kind of concerned me about the license in general, we should acknowledge it is a new manager, a new manager on the application that just spoke, and so this past history isn't necessarily a comment on him or how he might do as a manager. But the other thing that kind of concerned me was still the same owner that did have that liquor license at the time, and should be responsible for those things that happened. And to Mr. Rose's comments, there are at least five or maybe six other Class C opportunities within this very two blocks. I mean, there is a density issue here as well. So from my perspective, I view it as a density issue, but I'm also kind of uncomfortable with the history of the site, the number of incidents the police have had respond to a previous revocation, and then all those things combined with the fact that we're paying attention to these two blocks and building them up and trying to make a future for these two blocks in Florence that I don't think this is consistent with. I anticipate not being supported today. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you. Would the applicant like a rebuttal?
Troy Allgood, manager and owner of North Star Bar. I bartended at Alpine Inn, which is probably a half a mile, if that, from North Star Bar for four years, and I never had any problems up there. My mom still currently works there. She has bartended there for seven years and has never had any calls there. Steve Earlywine is not a part of this. This is my responsibility. I'm using my money to do this. All he is is the leasie. He had a for-lease sign on his window, and I see that as an opportunity. I myself, I've owned my own business for five years, which is a towing company called Allgood Towing, and it's still running now. As to the security problem, I will be there at all times to oversee everything that goes on in this bar. There's not going to be no problems. The place is going to be completely cleaner. It is going to be a totally new place. I mean, the cafe two doors down, which is Jimmy Sees, he's all for it because he's going to expand his menu just for this bar. I mean, he hasn't done it for Dees, and I heard that person bring up Dees. And I know in the last three weeks, there's been four fights at Dees. If it's not been called to the police, then I know myself. That's just stuff that goes in North Omaha. You know that. But like I said, we both work at Alpine Inn, and there's never been any confrontation when we work. And for the issue of parking, there's parking on the side, there's parking behind the facility, which could probably hold anywhere from six cars. There's parking behind in the alley. There's a bar right across the street, and it seemed to do all right with their parking. And they have the same issues as I would.
I speak as his mother.
Step over to the microphone and identify yourself if you would, please.
I am Diane Allgood. We have lived, both of my children, this is my youngest son, he's going to be 35 years. I have lived in our home on Bonnman Street for almost 40 years also. I have been in the Florence area. I love the Florence area. My children went to Menelusa. They also went to McMillan and North. I have been to the Florence. I've shopped there. I've been to the physicians there. I've gone to Dr. Taylor, which is now retired, to the dentist there. I haven't been to Dees ever. I'm not a drinker, but I have, Alpine is a family-owned restaurant. My grandchild is related to Mr. and Mrs. Robey, who are the grandparents. In the seven years that I have worked there, I have never been, I've never sold cigarettes to a minor. I card people who are 50 years old. I card people, and I do not even serve those 50-year-olds if they do not have a license. And I don't tolerate, if I see that they even have a slur, they are not served no longer. They are cut off. I have called taxi. I have even assisted people home because they have come into our bar drunk. This is going to be a sports bar where people can come and enjoy the sports, have a beer. He's also going to have an area where people can come. He's going to have movies. These are going to be movies where they can sit down, where the women might not want to see a football game. He goes to Nebraska Furniture Mart every Tuesday on sale day, buys family movies. If they want to go and do that, they can watch a movie in an area. He has gotten this whole place out.
Myself.
Himself, all by himself. He has hired people who will come in that are certified electricians. He is getting certified plumbers. In order to get a license in the state of Nebraska, you have to have it completely renovated and everything.
Undercoated.
Undercoated to 100 percent. He has done all this. My son is responsible. He's a hard-working young man, and I swear that. My life, he is a good man. We do not want a bar that is going to have, this is going to be a no-nonsense bar. People are going to come in, have a good time, watch a football game. Who doesn't want to have a beer sometimes and watch football? I particularly do not drink. I do not drink. I will also be there assisting him in this bar. He also has a father who has had medical problems that also would like to be there as a family. He has a family. He's been responsible. He's a responsible young man. I am proud to say that he is my son. And you probably hear this from mothers all the time, but I am very proud of him. He is responsible. I know Jimmy Sees. I've never, like I said, never been to Dees. I've never been to the cabin, but, and I'm going to be serious, once in a while, there is a fight that breaks out. But you know what? We take care of it. They are no longer, you know, to come into the Alpine. But I can remember when we've had to call the police to break up a fight. We have experience. And if you know Mr. and Mrs. Robey at the Alpine, they're wonderful people, and they have a wonderful chicken, and we do a good job. We're good bartenders. And I think he'd be a very good owner at the North Star. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it to all of you.
Thank you. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can get the two of you to come up again, or one of you, maybe. The first question I have, you said that there's a guy, the gentleman that still owns the club, does he still own it?
Yeah, he owns the building itself, but in my lease, I have first opportunity to buy. I do not have the money to, because I'm doing this all myself. I do not have money to purchase the building. I just sold my tow truck to even get this bar going, you know? If it takes off, I do plan on buying this building. I have first opportunity on the lease to buy it. If he goes to sell it, he has to offer it to me first. It would be my building for five years and up to 10 if I decide to go for another five.
Okay. Let me ask you the question about, now, can you revisit with me just for a little bit about the parking?
Yes.
I pretty much know the area.
Mm-hmm.
So what are you talking about, pretty much on the street parking, on-street parking?
On-street parking. Behind my facility itself, there is a large area that people can park, and they did before when it was the North Star. They could probably fit six cars. There's parking on the other side of the street. What is, it's not the numbered street, it'd be the street to the south.
I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
To the south.
The liquor store's on. There's parking on both sides of that street, and there's parking on the other side of the street as well.
Okay. Would you be opposed to having some sort of security?
No, I wouldn't be opposed.
And would you be opposed to a Class I instead of a Class C?
What's the Class I? Just being able to sell liquor itself.
No, just to be able to sell on-site.
Yeah, that's what I plan on, that's what I plan on anyway.
Just selling there and the bar.
No package.
Oh, no package? Yeah, I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, so you'd be willing to go to a Class I instead of a Class C?
Yes.
So there's no packaged liquor?
Yeah.
And you would be willing to have some security?
Yes. Myself, I've wrestled my whole life. I boxed for 15 years. I won the Golden Gloves. I even fought in Caesar's Palace. I've trained MMA. I mean, I will be there at all times. And plus, you can see when a fight is about to happen. There is, you know, people, like I said, I've worked at Alpine for four years. People get drunk, and they start to get into it, and you stop it before it happens. That's the thing that Steve Earlywine didn't do, the owner that is now there. You know, he would leave the bar. He wouldn't even sit there to stop it. He would leave, and leave his bartenders, which were usually women, to have to deal with that.
Now, when you say security, like hire a security officer?
Yeah, like a security person, yes.
Yes, if I had to do that, I would do that.
Absolutely.
Okay. It just, when you said he used to box, that's where I knew him from.
He did.
No, that's where I know him from, because I kept saying I knew his face.
Yeah, and plus, he was a state wrestler at Omaha North.
Yeah.
At one state, at Omaha North.
Yeah, I remember that. If you would be willing to, first of all, go to Class I?
Yes.
And if you would be willing to hire security, hire some form of security?
Yes.
I don't know that we need to do anything else in relationship to restrictions or anything, but I would, for one, would like to see you get a chance to operate.
Very much appreciate that.
But if you'd be, but I would only do it if you agreed to a Class I and agree to have security.
Okay, and that's security every day, or just on weekends?
Tell me what you, usually when we're talking about security, we're talking about like Friday and Saturday or something like that.
Yes, I could do that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I plan on having something to bring people in, like the last Friday of every month, I was planning on having a costume thing where the best costume would get a bar tab and karaoke on Fridays, you know, just to bring people in.
Yeah.
You know, people want something new.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And I would be willing to do that, yes.
And at some point in time, I may stop by, even though your mother's probably going to card me, but I.
Oh, please, just break. I will. I will.
Card the president. That's all.
You guys have this itch thing again. I don't know what. Here's my card, right here.
Oh, Mr. Tom. That's okay.
If you'd be willing to do that, I'd be willing to support it, but I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think you're welcome. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I was going to suggest security myself until I heard his resume.
Yeah. I remember watching him fight.
State champ in wrestling, Golden Gloves boxer, and a mixed martial arts competitor. To me, it sounds like.
Very, very athletic, sir.
Sounds like security needs help.
I would recommend that you take the training course that the Liquor Commission recommends to help you as you launch out on your new business, and with the amendment to an I and the security and the remodeling and what you and your mother said here today, I think I can support this. So I would make a motion to amend to an I.
Second.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, and I'll support that amendment, too. I think a Class I is an improvement. And I, again, it's no comment on your background.
Oh, no.
As evidenced here today, it's not like this is probably going to be approved, so if it is, I certainly wish you well and hope to bring as part of our project there into the fold, but I'm sort of uncomfortable with the site, and that'll be reflected in my vote today.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
And you don't discriminate against old people?
No, I don't.
Oh, absolutely not.
Yeah, cards us, man. She gonna card me a drink, man. Or y'all couldn't heal.
You'll have to go the nights they have security. We have no further lights. We have a motion and a second to amend to a Class I. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it is, sir.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Love you, son.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted as amended six to one.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Number nine, Sneaky Pete's, 3802 L Street. New application, new location, a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thomas Garvey, 101 West Mission Valley, on behalf of Mary Kaufman, who's the sole owner and manager of the site, and question. We're here to answer any questions of the committee.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Second, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is.
You're not a fighter.
Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm Steve Warren. I'm the president of Stephen Warren Pacific, Inc. I'm here to try to get the liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 11. Clancy's Pub, 7120 Pacific Street. Catering liquor license, new application, old location. They currently hold a Class C liquor license.
Yeah, here comes a fighter.
Yeah, I doubt, I doubt it.
Here comes a fighter.
Look at Irish timber.
Public hearing on item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mike Kelly, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I knew this would be controversial coming down here. Um, my management people like to do some catering out of this location. We traditionally have done it out of 114th. They like to also do it out of this location, so I do what my management people tell me, so I'm gonna ask.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 12. Stokes Grill and Bar, 1122 Harris Street. Request permission for an addition to the present Class C liquor license of a located area of 22 feet by 108 and an additional sidewalk café area of 21 by 10.
Public hearing on item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
John Ursick, owner of Stokes Grill and Bar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Mr. Jerem passes a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted six, zero, one passing. Item number 12. Stokes Grill and Bar, 1122 Harris Street. Request permission for an addition to the present Class C liquor license of a located area of 22 feet by 108 and an additional sidewalk café area of 21 by 10.
Public hearing on item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
John Ursick, owner of Stokes Grill and Bar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's...
And, Mr. President, if you, if you wish to grant this, you need to grant contingent on their getting proper permits.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. State your name and your address, and your reason for opposition.
Lori, excuse me, Lori Hook with the Lund Company, 120 Regency Parkway, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. We are the managing agent for the apartment building across the street above Scooters and First National Bank. And we are just concerned that noise levels from this additional outdoor area may negatively impact our residents of the residential building. We have windows, bedroom windows, right across the street, you know, and adding alcohol to that much additional space, we feel, could be detrimental. And if, you know, if, we realize Stokes is a good neighbor, very good neighbor of ours, but we ask that they be respectful of the multi-use nature of the environment that they're in, and the fact that there are residential folks on either side of them who would like to go to bed at a decent hour, you know? And I realize, I think, right now their hours of operation are only till 11:00 on the weekends. And we'd just like some reassurance from them that if this goes through, that they will not extend hours of operation, and that there would not be noise out there past 11:00 and 10:00 on the weeknights. And we think that would be a reasonable compromise. So we're not looking to impede their business in any way. They are a good neighbor.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The applicant likes some rebuttal? No, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, would the person from Stokes come up, please? Will your hours for the new outdoor area remain 11:00 P.M.?
Uh, they will. We have our liquor license until 2:00 A.M., so...
Um, will there be any outdoor music?
There will be no outdoor music, no.
And do you have a, have or need a lease from the city for the area? Yes.
The lease is pending with the Planning Department.
And what can you tell your neighbors as far as their concerns in addressing that this will become a noise nuisance?
Uh, we have had no issues with noise in the past, so I'm, quite honestly, I'm surprised by her, uh, her comments. The establishment to our east, Billy Frogs, is the, is the one that makes a lot of noise, so that's, uh, it's a surprise to me, quite honestly.
So they're west of you?
They are to the east of us.
No, the Scooters is west of 12?
Scooters is south of Howard.
Okay. Um, and so, what can you tell them that they're, about how you control your noise?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a very small patio. It's less than 200 square feet, so it'll be two tables of diners having dinner out there. So I hope that they won't make too much noise having dinner out there.
So are you planning on adding to your hours to go to 2:00, or are you the type of place that by 11:00 o'clock, people have pretty much cleared out?
We serve dinner until 11:00, yeah. But our liquor license is with the, with the laws of the state, so we rarely are open that late. College World Series and on occasions, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing's closed. Permits? Second. No, no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a six, one vote. Item number 13 is Nosh Wine Lounge, 1006 Dodge Street. Request permission to appoint Lily Anderson, manager.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, Honorable Members of the City Council, Brian Mickmick and Associates, 11422 Miracle Hills Drive. I am here representing and am with Lila Anderson, the sole owner and manager of Nosh Wine LLC. It's a pending manager application to appoint her, since she's down there 70 hours a week anyway.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Consent agenda. Intermember of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order and should be removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 16 through 32 begin now. Items 16 through 32 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Younger, and I'm the Benefits Manager with the City of Omaha. I'm here with Dick O'Gara, Steve Kerrigan, and Beth Long with ARS, and here to answer any questions you may have.
And that's on agenda item number 31.
That's on, agenda 31, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Keith Harris, Omaha, Nebraska, 15219 Butler Avenue. I come forward simply to, to oppose just that number 31, as it's, it's much different than the, than the other resolutions that, that the council is looking at today. One of the reasons that it's very different is because it has an effect directly on some of the employees of the, the city of Omaha, their access to, to health care, and potentially the, the way that their, their benefits will be meted out to them, or if they, if they will receive benefits through the work comp program. I've also got questions on that resolution on the, because I believe that one of the reasons that is coming before you today is as a cost-saving measure. And I have some questions on, on the ability for the switching of the management of work comp to alternative risk services. I have a question on how that would, would save costs, because right now, work comp is a, is an issue that is mandated by the state of Nebraska. So if an employee is, is injured at work, it's, it's quite simple. If you're injured at work and not able to go back to work, that you'll receive certain benefits. So if that, if that's the case, if those benefits would have to be meted out to an employee anyway, I've got questions on, on how would this particular service be able to save money for the city? The, the other part is that there's some question with the, with the speediness of, of the approval of the, of the changeover. I know that in the, in the resolution as it sits today, it says that, that it's for a period between March 1st of 2001, which is today, through December 31st of, of 2011. I apologize, 2011. But I believe that once, once this is changed, it will be longstanding, if, if I understand it correctly, that once the services are switched over, it doesn't just end in December, that it will have to continue into, you know, the years to come. So there's a long-term effect on, on employees. And with that being the case, I would certainly ask that, that the, that the council have some pause in approving it, so that, so that city H.R. would have the, the ability to at some point conversate with, with employees that are affected directly, and possibly their council, to, to let those employees know, well, what are the changes gonna be? If there's gonna be changes, are there changes in the people that you'll contact so that you can access your benefits? Are there changes? And if you're gonna receive benefits, exactly what those changes will be? And I, I, I think that that's reasonable, and I would hope that the council would, would consider those, those facts, those facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Are there any other opponents?
I'm James Ducey, 910 North 49th Street. I'm here as a follow-up to the information I said provided to each council member via email regarding the Hummel Park Nature Center. That's item number 25 on the agenda. I'm just here to kind of raise the issue of that the way the bid is written for that nature center, that the type of glass that will be used for that building will, based on consultation that I have with the nationwide expert on bird strikes for the original plan of the building, and though the building has been revised, there's still large areas of glass which, when placing a building of that sort into a wooded area such as Hummel Park, you're gonna have bird strikes likely to occur. I had originally talked with the people at the Parks and Recreation regarding their initial plan, and provided them comments that their building would be unsafe as it was designed at that time. I was told then that they would revisit the building this coming summer, once they found out that the bid that they received was too high for that initial design. I was able to find out last Thursday that they were going, in front of you people today, to have the agenda item approved to get the building built. So I was not aware of the, how they had fast-tracked it and moved the timeframe up several months. I'd also offered for the initial design to help raise some funds to offset the, the cost of putting in a type of glass called fritted glass. And fritted glass is a type of glass which goes through a, an additional manufacturing process, so that it has transparent features in the glass, which make it look like normal glass, but it is visible to birds, because birds do not see glass. And during the last three years, I spent hundreds of hours of my own time, for which no one has paid me for, to document the trouble with bird strikes around Omaha in, in the downtown area especially. Subsequent to that, I've had visits with officials, with the Fish and Wildlife Service and building owners, and been able to make some strides to have building owners address problems. There's also been good publicity in the World Herald on occasion, talking and giving awareness and recognizing the efforts by these numerous businesses. I also like to point out that even here at your atrium, at this very building, there were some problems with bird strikes on the south side of the atrium and on the north side as well. And by talking with your building manager, they were able to remove vegetation from the atrium and help to reduce the amount of bird strikes, because if a bird's flying along and it sees some greenery, it thinks it's maybe a bush or tree they can land in, and it shoots for that, and if it's on the inside, there's a sheet, a pane of glass between it and that vegetation, it'll hit that glass and in most cases will die. Also, we've had success on having the problem addressed at OPPD, who spent several thousand dollars to put a type of dark film on the glass where they found it was most dangerous. Creighton University put a film on an area where it was dangerous, so that they could reduce the extent of strikes there. Quest has also made efforts. Union Pacific has also done this as well, and even the Nebraska Medical Center. And there are currently discussions with the First National Bank to see what we can do at that building to reduce the extent of the problem there. Up at the Hummel Park, I feel that the city has an opportunity to really step up and go along with the tenants' approved through the Environment Omaha effort, to say that they want to have bird-safe buildings and that type of stuff. And I feel that by putting up the additional money at this time, or, or passing a resolution to approve the construction of the building, but to use fritted glass would be a wise measure to show that you really are committed to the Environment Omaha idea, and to say that, yes, we do want to have a building that is friendly for the, for the kids, and it's a nice place for the, the people that work there, and a nice nature center. But we also, I think, need to be sure that we have a nice area, so that the birds are residents there. And in the material I sent you, you know, there's hundreds of, you know, more, about 100 different species that are known to occur there that have been known to, to strike glass and be killed. And we have several hundred of those that die every year, so I feel that to have a nature center in Hummel Park, it should be something that's good for the people and good for the residents, and just something that really fits into the environment. And so I'm asking you today if you would approve a design that would include the additional cost for the fritted glass, and then allow efforts by myself and others within the community to try to make, raise money, and provide it to the gaming parks foundation to offset the additional cost. And I would also like to point out that of the $781,000 estimate, or bid cost for the building, $350,000 of that did come from the Nebraska Environmental Trust. And that money was, from the trust was given to help build, again, a building that is safe for the environment, good for the people, and good for the birds, and all that kind of thing. So again, I ask for you to approve the building of the nature center, but to also include the additional cost for the fritted glass.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any other opponents?
Name and address and the number you're opposing.
Um, I'm actually trying to rebut the last statement, or at least fill, inform the council of a little more information regarding that one. So I'm not an opponent, I'm a rebuttal to the opponent.
All right. I will call you up when...
Thank you.
...we get to the question period. Just stay up here in front. Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions on, on both these items, but I'll, I'll start maybe with number 25, seeing as that's what we just heard from, and we have a gentleman here waiting to speak. Let me first say that this isn't my district, and I'm a big proponent of this new project in Hummel Park. It's gonna be a great addition to what we do there, and construct it in time for the kids for the summer, which I think's important, too. But I will say, I appreciated your memo you sent to council, and I found it interesting. We all read it, and we had some discussion about it today at pre-council about bird-friendly glass, and had been brought to our attention before, so I wanted to have a few questions about that, and maybe allow Parks or a representative from Leo Daley respond to what we just heard there?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I would just, my name is Dale Bowder with Leeway Daily Company, 8600 Indian Hills Drive. Just to, just to comment on, I just wanted to fill in some more, a little more information that Mr. Ducey may not have had, in that the first time we bid this out, it, I, I'm sure you all know it came in over budget, so we ended up redoing it. But at the time that we bid it the first time, we added as an alternate to add the, I believe the glass that Mr. Ducey's referring to is called Omnilux, which comes from a company in Germany, which has stripes that are fitted with UV material that birds can see and people can't. That's the one that's actually transparent. We added that as an ad-alternate, and the two apparent low bidders, that ad-alternate for the entire building was $24,000, and the other was $28,000. And since we were so far over on our first time that we went through the budget, we didn't think we'd even get there on the second go-around. But one of the reasons we didn't, we weren't particularly worried about that in this case is, as I understand it, and Mr. Ducey may know better than I do, but my understanding in this setting, there's three reasons that the birds will strike the building.
Are there changes in the people that you'll contact so that you can access your benefits? Are there changes? And if you're going to receive benefits, exactly what those changes will be. And I think that that's reasonable. And I would hope that the council would consider those facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any other opponents?
I'm James Ducey, 910 North 49th Street. I'm here as a follow-up to the information I said provided to each council member via email regarding the Hummel Park Nature Center. That's item number 25 on the agenda. I'm just here to kind of raise the issue of that the way the bid is written for that nature center, that the type of glass that will be used for that building will, based on consultation that I have with the nationwide expert on bird strikes, for the original plan of the building, and though the building has been revised, there's still large areas of glass which, when placing a building of that sort into a wooded area such as Hummel Park, you're going to have bird strikes likely to occur. I had originally talked with the people at the Parks Recreation regarding their initial plan and provided them comments that their building would be unsafe as it was designed at that time. I was told then that they would revisit the building this coming summer, once they found out that the bid that they received was too high for that initial design. I was able to find out last Thursday that they were going, in front of you people today, to have the agenda item approved to get the building built. So, I was not aware of the, how they had fast-tracked it and moved the timeframe up several months. I'd also offered for the initial design to help raise some funds to offset the cost of putting in a type of glass called fritted glass. And fritted glass is a type of glass which goes through an additional manufacturing process so that it has transparent features in the glass which make it look like normal glass, but it is visible to birds, because birds do not see glass. And during the last three years, I spent hundreds of hours of my own time, for which no one has paid me for, to document the trouble with bird strikes around Omaha in the downtown area especially. Subsequent to that, I've had visits with officials, with the Fish and Wildlife Service and building owners, and been able to make some strides to have building owners address problems. There's also been good publicity in the World Herald on occasion, talking and giving awareness and recognizing the efforts by these numerous businesses. I also like to point out that even here at your atrium, at this very building, there were some problems with bird strikes on the south side of the atrium and on the north side as well. And by talking with your building manager, they were able to remove vegetation from the atrium and help to reduce the amount of bird strikes, because if a bird's flying along and it sees some greenery, it thinks it's maybe a bush or tree they can land in, and it shoots for that, and if it's on the inside, there's a sheet, a pane of glass between it and that vegetation, it'll hit that glass and in most cases will die. Also, we've had success on having the problem addressed at OPPD, who spent several thousand dollars to put a type of dark film on the glass where they found it was most dangerous. Creighton University put a film on an area where it was dangerous so that they could reduce the extent of strikes there. Quest has also made efforts, Union Pacific has also done this as well, and even the Nebraska Medical Center. And there are currently discussions with the First National Bank to see what we can do at that building to reduce the extent of the problem there. Up at the Hummel Park, I feel that the city has an opportunity to really step up and go along with the tenants approved through the Environment Omaha effort, to say that they want to have bird-safe buildings and that type of stuff. And I feel that by putting up the additional money at this time, or passing a resolution to approve the construction of the building, but to use fritted glass would be a wise measure to show that you really are committed to the Environment Omaha idea, and to say that, yes, we do want to have a building that is friendly for the kids, and it's a nice place for the people that work there, and a nice nature center, but we also, I think, need to be sure that we have a nice area so that the birds are residents there. And in the material I sent you, you know, there's hundreds of, you know, more, about 100 different species that are known to occur there that have been known to strike glass and be killed. And we have several hundred of those that die every year, so I feel that to have a nature center in Hummel Park, it should be something that's good for the people and good for the residents, and just something that really fits into the environment. And so I'm asking you today if you would approve a design that would include the additional cost for the fritted glass, and then allow efforts by myself and others within the community to try to make, raise money, and provide it to the gaming parks foundation to offset the additional cost. And I would also like to point out that of the $781,000 estimate, or bid costs for the building, $350,000 of that did come from the Nebraska Environmental Trust. And that money was, from the trust, was given to help build, again, a building that is safe for the environment, good for the people, and good for the birds and all that kind of thing. So again, I ask for you to approve the building of the nature center, but to also include the additional cost for the fritted glass.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any other opponents? Name and address and the number you're opposing.
I'm actually trying to rebut the last statement, or at least Phil informed the council of a little more information regarding that one. So I'm not an opponent, I'm a rebuttal to the opponent.
All right. I will call you up when we get to the question period. Just stay up here in front. Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings close. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions on both these items, but I'll start maybe with number 25, seeing as that's what we just heard from, and we have a gentleman here waiting to speak. Let me first say that this isn't my district, and I'm a big proponent of this new project in Hummel Park. It's going to be a great addition to what we do there, and constructed in time for the kids for the summer, which I think is important, too. But I will say, I appreciated your memo you sent to council, and I found it interesting. We all read it, and we had some discussion about it today at pre-council about bird-friendly glass, and had been brought to our attention before, so I wanted to have a few questions about that, and maybe allow Parks or a representative from Leo Daley respond to what we just heard there.
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I would just, my name is Dale Bowder with Leeway Daily Company, 8600 Indian Hills Drive. Just to comment on, I just wanted to fill in some more, a little more information than Mr. Ducey may not have had, in that the first time we bid this out, I'm sure you all know it came in over budget, so we ended up redoing it. But at the time that we bid it the first time, we added as an alternate to add the, I believe the glass that Mr. Ducey is referring to is called Omnilux, which comes from a company in Germany, which has stripes that are fitted with UV material that birds can see and people can't. That's the one that's actually transparent. We added that as an ad alternate, and the two apparent low bidders, that ad alternate for the entire building was $24,000, and the other was $28,000. And since we were so far over on our first time that we went through the budget, we didn't think we'd even get there on the second go-around. But one of the reasons we didn't, we weren't particularly worried about that in this case is, as I understand it, and Mr. Ducey may know better than I do, but my understanding in this setting, there's three reasons that the birds will strike the building. Number one, they'll see through the glass and see something inviting that they're going to land on. That'd be one reason that they'd run into it. Number two, they would see the glass as reflective, and they would think there were trees or other birds behind them and fly into the glass. The third reason in this setting would be because it's lit in the evening or at night, and they would be attracted to the light. Well, in our particular case, with the use of the building, most of the time for the primary use, it will be not used in the evening at the night. Its primary uses are in summer, be closed up, locked up by the time evening rolls around. Secondly, the biggest pieces of glass on the building, because of security concerns in the area, when not in use, have roll-up shutters to protect them, so there's not even glass on the outside to see when it's closed down. The only windows that would be exposed in, at all times, would be the small clerestory windows along the top on the north side, so those are relatively small. In that case, we'd be down to basically, primary danger for birds would be seeing their reflection in it. That would be about the only time that they would do that, because it's not going to be on at night, and there's nothing inviting for them to land on, on the inside of the building. They just see a flat white wall on the inside. So, in our estimation, we have, we do not think this is going to be a big issue for the building. However, that number that I cited for putting in the omni-glass would be for all of the glass. I think in retrospect, if we were really worried about it now, we'd only be concerned about the upper windows, the clerestory windows that we were talking about for, I think those are the only real danger to birds. I did check with, on another project that I did several years ago in Lincoln, the Pioneers Park Nature Center, which is a similarly constructed building. It's similar in scale, similar amounts of glass. It's in a different setting, in that it's a prairie setting as opposed to a woodland setting. And I called to check with them to see if they had had any trouble, because we, at that, this is several years ago, and the ornolux glass didn't exist at that time. We didn't even know that it was going to be invented at that time. And they said they don't have any trouble with bird strikes. The other thing is that, as this park is in use, there's going to be lots of screaming kids around, so while in use, birds aren't going to go there anyway, because they're going to fly away, because the kids will be making plenty of racket most of the time in the park. So, we, I just wanted to be prepared to make sure you understood the point of view from the, as representative of the Parks Department, on what we did and why we did it.
Thanks, I appreciate that perspective. And it sounds to me like you felt you've minimized the possibility of this occurring through all the things you just mentioned, except for maybe the small segment of windows. And if the small segment of windows is in question, is that for consideration with this type of glass or our film that was discussed, or any kind of other options?
Well, the real problem, we looked pretty carefully, the first time the bids came in, because they came in so high, $28,000, between $24,000 and $28,000 for a small amount of glass that we have on there, concerned us. We thought, how in the world can this be so darn expensive? Well, it's made by one place in Ramstad, Germany, and I talked to some glass people about it, and they say, well, what you're probably paying for there is the whole container full. Regardless of how much you need, they're only going to ship a whole container out. So, that's why that price has inflated. So for, if we were only going to try to put the ornolux glass in the clerestory windows, it'd still probably be $28,000, because we'd have to pay for the entire shipment of glass that we were getting. I certainly have worked on, I've worked on zoos, I've worked on nature centers. I'm a big outdoorsman, I don't, I'm not hostile to the environment in any way. I am very sympathetic to the flora and fauna of our surroundings. And so we're not interested in harming wildlife in any way. We've done what we think is prudent. I would almost think that if we thought we were going to have trouble with that north-facing glass, because we'll be able to see them, it, and the numbers that most of the studies are cited say, hey, we really don't know how many birds hit buildings. It's estimated between 100 million and a billion a year, which is a pretty big range. And the reason they're not able to narrow it down is, they hit the building, they hit the ground, and then something else gets them, and so you don't know them. But in this case, we're going to see them, because they're going to be laying on the roof, so we'll know if we have a problem. And in which case, I think we can address it at some other time. The real problem with, one of the, there's three real ways to do this. One is the ornolux glass, which is the very expensive way, and that's the one that maintains the translucent quality of the glass. Birds see it, or supposedly they do, and people don't. The other thing to do is to do what's actually called fritted glass, and fritted glass is actually fusing of ceramic to the surface of the glass. Now, an insulated pane, that's usually on phase two, three, or four, which is not, usually don't want that on the outside of the building, because it's exposed to the weather. Your fritz or your film, it's basically a porcelain silk screen on the outside of the glass that's sending heat and oil to the glass. You don't want that on the outside of the building, because it's exposed to the weather, it'll have a tendency to deteriorate. They, I don't know, I just don't know, I've never asked anybody to do it. I don't know if they get warranted in that case. In this case, that's what we'd want to do, because that's the only way we'd ensure that birds would not see the reflection. If the fritz are on the inside face, they still might see reflection, it might not do any good for us. The other option is to put films. There are films that are available. However, in recent experience with another project in the area, actually, if you put film on the glass, you will nullify the glass warranty, the warranty on the glass itself. So, I don't really think any of those are really good options in our case. A better option might be to, we may not have that big a problem, like I said, because the windows are relatively small in this case. They are in a ribbon, but they're not big. They're less than two feet high and run the length of the building. So we're not talking gigantic panes of glass for them not to see. We may be able to solve the problem with things suspended inside the window that maybe spin, so the birds see them, so they know there's not glass there, so.
So, sufficient to say that if you find you have some challenges with this top row windows, there's some options you can take to mitigate that?
Yeah, I would think that we could. I strongly suspect, though, in this case, just, and I'm, I'm not a bird watcher, I'm not a great bird guy, but just as an observer of nature, I would think in this case, we are not going to have a huge problem, because our biggest panes of glass that we would normally worry about, will either have kids occupied running around, or the shutters will be closed most of the time.
Okay.
We're really talking one area, so.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, is it possible that we could vote on 25 and 31 separately from the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, you could, sir.
Okay, I'd like to move that if possible, Mr. President. And then if I could have Mr. Harris come back up.
Name?
Yes.
Keith Harris, 15219 Butler Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Keith, in a very succinct 15 seconds, what is, what's the summary of your statement?
The summary of my opposition?
Uh-huh.
Two things, very succinctly. First of all, the, is this really an area where cost is going to be effectively saved for the city?
Okay, so that's one of them.
That's one of the areas. And then the second area is the, is the timing, just a request for the city to just, to give some time to talk with the employees that are directly affected, so that we can understand if there's, you know, changes, what those changes are, because it seems to be on a fast track through. I think that possibly, maybe there'd be more agreement, and certainly there'd be more awareness from other employees that are affected, if there was some time for us to talk together about the issues before the spending is approved. Because once it's done, it appears that it's going to be long-reaching. This isn't, this isn't something that probably just affects us until the end of this year.
You don't, you don't think enough input on your part or education about what it's, what it's about is taking place?
Correct. And not just, I don't stand here saying that I speak for other employees, but I know that there's other employees that are affected also, and if they are not aware of the issue, I think that they should be made aware of the issue, so that everybody can kind of digest what's going on.
Okay, if you, don't go too far away, just stay up front somewhere. Could I have a representative from the city come back again, and maybe, Richard, you may want to come, or? How would you respond to the two main concerns that Mr. Harris brought up?
Stephanie, I'm the city benefits manager. I wanted to respond to Mr. Harris's concern regarding how this will affect the employees and the communication. There will be no change to the employees. We currently partner with O'Hara, who is our certified managed care partner, and have a dedicated case manager that handles all work-related injuries. The first report of injury filed by supervisors, filed by employees, is submitted to O'Hara, and O'Hara is notified, and a nurse case manager either is contacted directly from the employer supervisor, or she makes an outreach call to that particular employee. That process will not change. What will change is how the city is processing those workers' compensation claims currently. We are currently processing those claims in-house. We have a very small staff to handle a large amount of workers' compensation claims currently. And our hopes in awarding the service agreement with ARS is to make the city's process more efficient, be more responsive to our employees, and work in conjunction with our current certified managed care partner, O'Hara.
Do you see an advantage to getting the message out and the education and understanding be increased before we vote on this? What's your view on that?
Well, there's no change to the employee. ARS, let me backtrack. The city current workers' compensation program is self-insured, meaning that the city has the ultimate decision-making process in regards to the compensability of a worker's compensation claim. What we're asking ARS to provide for us as a service is to review those claims, review the medical information and data that's been provided to us, and make a recommendation on whether that particular claim is compensable under workers' compensation, based upon the workers' compensation statutes by the state of Nebraska. The city being self-insured can either agree with the recommendation made by ARS, or if ARS decides to deny a claim, and the city believes that it's responsible for that claim, we will accept that. The city still has control of the decision-making process regarding the compensability of a worker's compensation claim.
And you see no value of a layover?
I don't, because there won't be an impact to the current process as far as the employee. No, I don't see a value of a layover. You know, again, again, there's no impact to the employee, and that was, when I was reviewing the RFP responses, that was my main concern, is how the TPA will incorporate the current city's process, and how flexible they will be to incorporate their process with the city. Because I did not, I want to have minimal impact on our employees, because I will get the phone calls.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Stephanie, if you could return to the podium.
Sure.
At the, at the end of this year, I mean, we would anticipate that if you are satisfied with the ARS services, that we would renew this contract at that time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it'll be done on a year-to-year basis?
It will be done on a year-to-year, I thought it was very important, especially since we're transitioning from an in-house model to outsourcing it to a third-party administrator. I wanted to make sure that there was a partnership, that they were able to meet the needs of the city and its employees, and so wanting to have that determination on whether or not we will extend the contract into the next year.
Okay. And while this is going to cost the city of Omaha approximately $90,000 for a 10-month period, you do anticipate some cost savings to the city as well, as we will be able to better manage the personal injury cases as they are presented, is that correct?
That is correct. And most importantly, too, though, I think it'd be a little bit more efficient for our employees as well. We would have a collaborative effort between ARS, O'Hara, and the city to get those decisions out to our employees, and make sure we're coordinating care as efficiently and as effectively as possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes, Stephanie, I don't know if you're the person or Richard O'Gara, but I think that your program is an important component to an overall mindset that this council's had to, and the administrative administrations had, to assess all of our operations of city government, to see where in these tough times we can be more efficient, where we can save taxpayer money, and in this case, do that while accomplishing the same high level of service to our employees who are through the comp system that they expect and deserve when they're injured on the job. There's also another component to the safety director, who will be analyzing this data, looking for trends in how people are getting hurt, so that we can take the steps necessary to avoid those injuries in the first place, whether it be through exercise and stretching to safety equipment, to other devices they can wear. But I think it's important to get on the record just how much money a year the taxpayers of Omaha are spending to care for injured workers, and for injured workers who then go on to receive pension disabilities. And, Mr. O'Gara, Stephanie, how much, how many millions of dollars a year do we, the city of Omaha, pay in work comp expenses?
Richard O'Gara, Director of Human Resources. We currently pay, last year was $5,885,000. It has ranged from $5 million to $7 million per year. We have approximately between 450 and 550 accidents per year. We've averaged 450 accidents per year for the last 10 years.
And that's employees injured on the job, or claiming to be injured on the job?
Employees injured on the job for 2,500 employees, which is somewhat high. During that time, our safety management has been up and down, as we've had people retired or laid off. We have just hired a position after somebody retired, and the safety and training coordinator position, which will work really hand-in-hand with the TPA, and through their reporting, the TPA has very good reporting on accidents. And we'll be able to focus in on those areas where there are accidents around the city by city employees, and through training, and, or changing the situation, changing the process, we'll be able to reduce, because that's the only way we're really going to save money here, is to reduce the accidents.
And then, I would imagine, there's a pretty large number of employees whose injuries are severe enough, or the claims are severe enough, that they go on then to become disabled from employment, and make a claim for pension disability. How many millions of dollars a year do we spend on disability payments to former employees?
Approximately $9 million.
So we have between almost $15 million and, or $14 to $16 million a year that we're spending in this area, and I think the taxpayers can appreciate that this is such a serious issue, that we would be foolhardy not to try to take steps to analyze our situation, try to get, see what our trends are, see where we can take steps to implement measures to avoid injuries, as well as to improve on the processing of the claims, to analyze frequency and duration of treatment. There may be people who are receiving treatment that is totally ineffective at treating the type of injury or condition they have, yet they can keep going, going, going. The employee gets frustrated that they're not getting any better, wondering why they're not getting any better, yet you have the data, you have the company that has the efficacy and treatment standards, and they can say, well, you know, the studies show that after, you know, three months of physical therapy on the same situation, perhaps, you know, you ought to have an MRI, because you maybe have a disc impairment in your back, and maybe you need surgery, yet. If we're not looking at these things, then the beat goes on as normal, and the $14 to $16 million a year keeps going on, and maybe even gets worse. And to have a workforce of 2,200 with 400 and some injury claims a year, to me, is a pretty high number, and it doesn't, makes just fiscal sense. It's something that we would be really remiss and irresponsible if we didn't try to address the situation and become more efficient. So I appreciate your efforts, Mr. O'Gara, and everything that Stephanie, you've done since you've come on board, and I applaud the mayor in this regard for being proactive on this and bringing this to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Gara, the $6 million that you mentioned, does that include the healthcare expenses, or is that just the lost wages?
Which, which?
Well, you said, you said the first number was $6 million a year. Or $5 million, excuse me, $5.8 million. But is that just lost wages? Is that the claims, or is that healthcare as well?
That's for medical claims, that's for lost wages, and that's for the administrative fees that we pay for O'Hara, our certified managed care partner.
Okay, so it's the entire package?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then the $9 million that we talked about is both medical and pension, and that comes from the pension fund. That's paid from the pension fund for civilian or fire and police.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Was this a request for proposal process? Was that followed to get where we're at today?
Absolutely.
Okay, and ARS was the low bidder?
Yes, they were.
And the best bid?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And was there a sizable amount of difference between their bid and the next one?
Yes.
In the range of?
We receive bids in the range of $300,000 to $1.5 million. Let's see, between the first and second.
The second was, over three-year period, would have been $990,000 for the second bidder, and that was a local firm. bidder, and that was a local firm. So, and we went from $330,000, I believe, we had $334,000 over a three-year bid from ARS. So that's a sizable amount of money.
And the, as I was listening to Mr. Harrison, also reading the responses from your department back to him, we're at this point now where you're asking for approval, and the process will not affect what's happening now with an injured employee. That stays the same. That process stays the same, correct?
You are correct.
There'll be no impact?
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. You will be notifying those employees once the process that has been started through the RFP. You'll be notifying the employees that are impacted, or all employees that are for the city, of where we're at with this new addition to your department and your operation. Is that correct?
You are correct. I wanted to hold off on communicating any types of changes until it was approved, because I don't want to give out misinformation to our employees in case the resolution wasn't approved. So yes, I will be communicating to our employees.
Stephanie has already communicated with the unions, so all the unions, civilian, police, and fire have been communicated with, as far as the officers.
So I just want to make sure that there's no misstep in any form of communication as we go through this process, and give people a false impression out there that the city's doing another sleight of hand. That's, we've been accused of that here over the years.
The letter that is submitted once an employee files a first report of injury is still signed by me, city logo on the letterhead, and of course, if any employees have any issues regarding our current managed care partner, O'Hara, or potentially ARS, my phone number is located on the letter, and they can contact me with any questions or concerns.
I agree with what my colleagues have been saying, and especially Mr. Jerem. Anytime that we're out there looking for a reasonable amount of dollars for the best practices, I think we should take that opportunity, and I believe that's what we're doing here. I would be certainly in favor of that. I don't see any further lights. We are, we have a request to do item 25 and 31 separately, so let's have a motion on items 16 through 24 and 26 through 31 first. Would you make, are you making a motion to do that? And then I will second that. No further lights, roll call?
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Now we'll take 25, which is the Hummel Park Daycare.
Motion approved, 25.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Now we'll go to ordinances on second reading, item 33, ordering says they require private property for the purpose of the 42nd Street public improvements from R Street to Y Street.
Public hearing on item number 33 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
We'll take items 34 and 35 together. 34 is ordinance for a contract with Kavanaugh-McDonald Consulting for provision of actuarial services, including performance of actual, annual actuarial evaluation and certain additional actuarial consultant services to the city of Omaha employees retirement system, and 35 is the same company for the city of Omaha Police and Fire Retirement System.
Public hearing on items number 34 and 35 begin now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just have one question on, on these items. This is the change of our current actuary to a new actuary for several years for both the civilian and police and fire pension systems. As a member of the civilian pension board, we've discussed this at some length with Mr. Brown and Ms. Backrattella. In the context of, we've had our previous actuary working with us, and a subcommittee we had together with the unions to talk about the civilian pension condition and changes that will be necessary to that even in the short term, to make that civilian pension okay as well, because right now it isn't, it's only about 60% funded. And I think it's been a good education process for all of us on this subcommittee to talk about what those options might be for further negotiations and change. So it was important to us to have, within this contract, the ability to engage the actuary in that conversation without it costing more money. So my, my question simply to Mrs. Backrattella, I think that this is included in this contract and would not cost additional dollars to have that ongoing engagement and evaluation. Is that correct?
Pam Backrattella, Finance Director, we wouldn't incur any additional dollars beyond what we've spent. I guess going forward, you know, we have to pay our actuaries by the hour for additional work. If there's any additional work by the actuary, similar to what we paid for Milliman, we would pay Kavanaugh. Does that answer your question?
Okay. So it may cost more by the hour, but we have that capability within both these contracts, whether it's civilian or police and fire.
Yes, we do.
Yes, that's correct.
And ongoing conversations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Pete, thanks for, for those comments as well. But as a representative, as the city council's representative on the Police and Fireman's Pension Board, I just want to stress that this is just going to be able to give us one more tool to better manage our pension fund. There's been a lot of conversation, the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund has an over $600 million unfunded liability, and this is just another tool that will give us the ability to better manage these funds for the city of Omaha. So this is, this is a good idea, and I fully support it.
Thank you. No further lights. We have a motion.
No, this is just public hearing.
Oops, sorry, next item.
Item 36, ordinance approve a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Omaha and Donors Trust for the sale of certain surplus real property commonly known as Omaha's Rosenblatt Stadium.
Oh, boy. Public hearing on item number 36 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Items, we can take items 37 and 38 together, they're both dealing with the downtown business improvement district. Item 37 is ordinance to reauthorize the business improvement district, known as the downtown business improvement district, number 6874, to provide for special assessments, provide for extension of the operating agreement, to provide for baseline municipal services agreement, and to provide for a method for representative governance. And 38 is special ordinance approving the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2011-12 work plan and budget, which includes the 2010-11 progress reports, stakeholders' engagement in research, and the 2011-12 work plan and budget and program summary for the Omaha Downtown Business Improvement District, and living special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the business improvement district number 6874. And A is a communications from Assistant City Attorney Bernard Endenbosh.
Public hearing on items 37 and 38 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Bernard Endenbosh, Assistant City Attorney. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you.
And Joe Gudenrath is here on behalf of the Omaha Downtown.
Next proponent?
Joe Gudenrath, Executive Director of the Downtown Improvement District, 1620 Dodge Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Gudenrath, just a couple of questions for you. This being the renewal of the downtown business improvement plan that was established about five years ago, and I recall those conversations on the planning boards, so I just had a couple of follow-up questions for you at this juncture in its history. So it looks like the plan here is the same boundaries, essentially the same work plan as you've had for the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
And one main difference being a cap in the assessment formulas, right, that may not have been there before?
Yes, Joe Gudenrath, Downtown Improvement District, 1620 Dodge Street. The, the proposed ordinance for reauthorization was created over many months in May, incorporating the interest of the business improvement district board and my board, the Downtown Improvement District, as well as stakeholder input. One of those changes is the removal of the cap of $300,000. In its place is a set flat rate, tax rate. What this essentially does is allows us to, to gain any revenue from increased valuations and be able to allow us to address inflation, where previously with that flat cap of $300,000, we didn't have that ability and suffered from inflation.
Okay. At the time, not, not everyone on the boundaries were supportive, but would you say everyone now is supportive of what you're doing?
I would say, I wouldn't, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we've done a very good job, primarily my board and a lot of the partnerships that we've established to calm a lot of the misconceptions and fears that were initially in existence prior to our creation. And then, as I mentioned earlier, build those partnerships, seek outside funding to provide benefits that go above and beyond the, the tax assessment that's used to fund our operations.
Okay, thank you. I know it's a lot of work, too, having just gone through this process in Benson as well, that's getting underway. It is a lot of work to establish one of these, and I think it's probably testament to the job you've done the last five years, that you don't have opposition here today, and that there is support for this going forward. So I know I'll be supportive next week, and proponents of these kind of tools throughout the city.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 39, special ordinance levying a special tax for weeds group number 2011-1.
Public hearing on item number 39 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
That's what we probably could.
Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 40, special ordinance levying a special tax for weeds group 2011-2.
Public hearing on item number 40 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
41, special ordinance levying a special tax for litter group 2011-3.
Public hearing on item number 41 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Resolution, item 42, resolution to attach Farm Credit Building LLC Tax Center Refinancing Redevelopment Plan, contemplating the adaptive reuse of the Farm Credit Building located at 206 South 19th Street into a mixed-use commercial and residential redevelopment project, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 42 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, excuse me, good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, just here to present the resolution for the TIF redevelopment plan for the Farm Credit Building. As you're aware, this does add back very much-needed market-rate apartment units to the downtown area, does help to increase the density in the area. This is a, a building that is being designated historic. The project does also include the purchase and the redevelopment of the Douglas, 20th Street Douglas parking garage as well. There, there may be an underground passageway that may be constructed. The developer is here if you have any further questions. This is a project that we think is a very worthwhile project. It does help to revitalize a part of the downtown area that is in much need of revitalization, helps to remove a lot of the vacant or near-vacant structures that are there, and help to, to densify the, the area which is called for in the downtown master plan. If you have any other questions, otherwise I will ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Mulligan?
Bridget, could I ask you a question, please?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
Did you say that the underground tunnel is, that's just under consideration? That isn't a?
Right, it's under consideration. The developer is working with his engineer now to check the feasibility of that.
And then just, if you know, is the building right next door to it, is, is it also a historic site? The building that would be to the south?
To the south. Get my directions.
Towards us.
By A.
Yeah, Service Life.
Service Life. I don't know when that building was constructed, but I'm certain it was constructed before 1960, and
Yes, it was.
And by historic purposes, if it's more than 50 years old, it's historic, but then there's a process for actually designating it historic. So it, I don't know if it's actually been designated historic by the National Preservation Historic Trust.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Bridget. I really like this project, it's going to bring more people living downtown.
Right.
Just curious, how many apartment units?
106 market-rate apartment units.
Studios, ones and twos?
Ones and twos. I believe, is it a couple of?
66 twos.
66 twos.
Wonderful.
66 two units.
I wish you well.
Two bedroom units.
Thank you. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. 43 is resolution to attach Midtown Properties LLC Tax Center Refinancing Redevelopment Project Plan, which proposes converting an underutilized surface parking lot in the Jocelyn Castle neighborhood area located at 140 North 41st Street into new market-rate residential townhome construction project.
Public hearing on item number 43 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, again, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This is the Midtown redevelopment, Midtown Properties TIF redevelopment plan. This is a new developer to use the TIF program, and this is a new construction project in the Jocelyn Castle neighborhood. This developer has been working with that neighborhood for several years and has won approval by that neighborhood to bring this project online. This is a townhome project, new construction, two buildings, three units per building of three-bedroom townhomes, market-rate rental, of course. Now, it's rental, but as the market changes, the developer will assess that, and they may become for sale as well. This particular developer has been working in the Midtown area at least for the last four years, and has a general boundary of 31st to about 38th Street, Pacific to about Dodge Street. And they have been working, as I said, for about the last four years to use their own private dollars to help revitalize the, the neighborhood community, and have at least rehabilitated about 14, now I'm on the conservative side, and the developer is here if you should have further questions, and can maybe back me up, or correct me, rather, but over 14 apartment buildings in that area, and over 200 units they have been able to rehabilitate in the last four years using their own private dollars, and have decided to use this program to help leverage some of their funding. With that, we think this is a very important project, a very much-needed project, helping to revitalize the community. It brings the new housing into the market, helps to densify the market, and to remove some blight from that neighborhood by taking the vacant property, surface parking lot, which is right there now, and converting it to this new project. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Mr. Jerem?
You have somebody else?
I'm sorry. Any other proponents?
Reverend Howard Dotson, 610 South 32nd Avenue. I live at 32nd and Jackson, and I've benefited from the revitalization with Midtown Properties. And the reason I support this plan is because we're converting empty lots into market-rate. Reverend Slagle, one day at Creighton, used the word gentrification, and I encouraged him, and he's a very humble man, and he took the reframe, that we want revitalization, not gentrification. And there's too many units in my community that are being flipped into condos. And if we do that and gentrify, we're just pushing the poor people to another community. And planning agrees that we need mixed-income housing initiatives. So to maximize the empty lots for market as an alternative to flipping apartments into condos is something that we support as we seek revitalization, not gentrification.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, again, this is in District 3, and so I'm, I'm very impressed with the, how proactive the planning department's been in working with the developers, been trying to come in and, in this case, take an old parking lot and turn it into two townhome buildings that'll have up to three units each. I think it's a great project, and I appreciate your support. Thanks.
Motion approved.
Thank you. No further lights, roll call?
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray? Mackey Construction LLC appeals the rejection of their bid on January 26th for Columbus Park Parking Lot Improvement Project.
Public hearing on item number forty-four begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Kurt Ferguson with Mackey Construction, 6232 North, 150 Fifth Avenue. We recently put in a bid for this project, and Exhibit A, needing to use Tier One and Tier Two small emerging businesses, we left the sheet blank. We had trouble getting ahold of people that were qualified to give us a bid. The only person I was able to get ahold of was Swain Construction, and they were actually bidding it themselves, and we're the next in line of bidders for a low bid. And I would just like to see if it would be possible, since Mackey Construction qualifies for Tier One and Tier Two small emerging business, if we could be granted an extension to try to get through the approval process. It would be a cost savings of about $70,000 or $7,000 on a $60,000 bid.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Morgan Weaver, Councilman.
Would you please explain for the benefit of the appellant and the people who are here or may be watching, how the bid process works, when bids come in, the rules and how it works if things aren't as called for in the bid?
Yeah, quite frankly, the bidding process is a very elongated one. Actually, Mr. Brown should probably answer this instead of I, but I'll just make comment that when the bids come in, the closing time for that is 11 o'clock on a particular Wednesday that they're due. There have been concerns in the past that when bids are submitted, there's attempts to change, adjust, or somehow change the documentation that's presented, and then that simply cannot be allowed. The bidding process and keeping the integrity of the process, we must follow the ordinances and follow them strictly. Whereas we understand this gentleman's appeal, quite frankly, it boils down to the fact that all the documentation was not presented and in the original bid package as submitted.
So under the bidding rules and the laws that we have, if we were to grant this appeal, it could open us up and we could get liability to the next bidder?
Yes, sir, and I think it would call into question the whole integrity of the bidding process, and for that reason, I believe, if you ask the law department, that they would concur with staying with that procedure.
So in this case, we're, our hands are tied. We have to dot the i's, cross the t's to comply with what the rules are?
I believe that's the case, sir.
Okay.
Motion denied appeal second. No further lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The appeal is denied seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on gen. items 45 through 46 shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on gen. items 47 through 49 and 51 through 52 on the supplement shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. The City Council is going into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations only.[838.43]